See now, I'm just waiting for you all to go like. Someone called us, uh, Patent Township Order Supervisors meeting June nine, July ninth, twenty twenty five at five thirty five to order. Uh, if we could stand, stand for the signing of our pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome those who are here in person as well as anyone in attendance remotely. Um, I want to welcome you all, especially new Patent Township residents, to the Patent Township community, which is our motto, a place for all. Um, any announcements? Um, currently, uh, any additions to the posted agenda?
No.
All right, seeing none, moving forward to public comments. So any resident, taxpayer, person who has anything to say, um, we welcome you at this time. If it pertains to anything in the agenda, we just ask that you please wait until that time. So leaving some space for public comments. Seeing none, we will move on to number three presentations, public hearing. Uh, so we have a few proclamations here. Uh, we will first start with proclamation supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for America two fifty. Um, Amy, I don't know if you want to?
Sure, I'll explain. So the United States will celebrate its two hundred and fiftieth birthday in twenty twenty six. Uh, the Pennsylvania legislature back in twenty eighteen created a commission to plan, encourage development, develop and coordinate the commemoration of the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary and also Pennsylvania's integral role in that event. Um, every municipality is being asked to consider approving a proclamation supporting the commission and the event.
All right. Uh, so I will first entertain, should I read this proclamation first?
You can if you want to.
All right. Uh, let me read the proclamation actually. Supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States, semi quintessential. You made me read that.
That's why.
American two fifty PA. Uh, whereas the Pennsylvania legislature and the governor created America two fifty PA in two thousand eight to plan, encourage, develop and coordinate the commemoration of the two hundred and fifty University of the United States and Pennsylvania's integral role in that event and the role of its people on the nation's past, present and future. And whereas America two fifty PA hopes to engage all Pennsylvanias and all sixty seven counties through their many signature and officially recognized programs, projects and events over the next several years by inspiring future leaders and so celebrating all Pennsylvania's contributions to the nation over the last two hundred and fifty years. And whereas by adoption of America two fifty PAs for pillars of epic, we hope to educate, preserve, innovate and celebrate. Now therefore be it resolved and hereby resolved that the township of Patton hereby endorses America two fifty PA and their mission to educate, preserve, innovate and celebrate every Pennsylvania in every county. And it is further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be sent to the Senator County Legislative Delegation and America two fifty PA Commission adopted this day, this, July nine, nine day of July twenty twenty five. I'll entertain a motion to approve this proclamation.
So move.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussions? I appreciate the motivation behind this. Um, I am hopeful that, uh, as they move forward with this recognition that they, um, really uphold their, um, their statement about preserving, educating, innovating, um, and really speaking, uh, truth to the history in all of its forms of the United States and Pennsylvania's role in that. So we should not disregard uncomfortable and unpleasant parts of our history and I'm hopeful that that is acknowledged throughout the recognition over the next few years. So, uh, without further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Uh, moving forward, proclamation celebrating the thirty fifth University of Americans with Disabilities Act.
So we have Mr. Terry Watson here to talk about the Americans with Disabilities Act. So if you want to come to the front, Terry.
Hello, everyone again. Uh, so I, uh, first wanted to give, uh, uh, thank you for having this proclamation for the ADA. Um, I think that it's a pretty important thing, not just to our nation, but obviously our, our town here at Patent Township. Um, what sort of cracked me up though is if, if the theme of this year, uh, sounds very similar to the Pat's Township, uh, motto. So the theme is we belong here and we're here to stay. Uh, so it very sounds very similar to what Patent Township is all about. Uh, I did write some remarks and I'll be as quick as I possibly can. And please bear with me today, it's been a long day and I'm also not feeling one hundred percent. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it quick. So again, my name is Terry Watson. I do serve as the Associate Director for Disability Services at Penn State World Campus. Uh, most in this community, they know me from my involvement with the, uh, Community and Campus Unity Group, uh, which I'm the chair or the founder of Strategies for Justice, or as my role as a Vice Chair for the Central Region Human Relations Commission, which I'm representing Patent Township. But no matter how you know me, if you do know me, you know that I'm dedicated to disability inclusion and justice and disability pride, which we are celebrating this month. Myself as a neurodiverse individual raising a neurodiverse son, disability inclusion is vital for us and the many students that live in this town and the community members and the visitors that visit Patent Township. So for that purpose, it gives me great pleasure to, uh, have this proclamation here at Patent Township acknowledging the thirty fifth anniversary of the American with Disabilities Act. And in July, we do celebrate disability pride and recognize the contributions that nearly seventy million adults with disabilities, uh, make in our communities as well as these seven point five million students with disabilities who attend our educational institutions. I want to highlight a couple of things that Penn State is doing, uh, to, to, uh, to, uh, celebrate the ADA. One, um, for Penn State faculty and staff and students, they have created in the libraries, a bookshelf for titles to celebrate the, uh, Disability Pride Month in July, which they, students and faculty have access to. Uh, two of my World Campus students that I, I work with, they are collecting thirty five stories for the thirty fifth anniversary to share with the world on July thirtieth. And I will send information about that program as well, so we can all have access to attend that. And, uh, the accessibility team at the university is still leading the way in accessibility, making sure that students can fully participate in accessing course material. There are many initiatives, again, that's underway, but I will invite you all to attend the thirtieth, uh, thirty fifth anniversary on July thirtieth, uh, for more updates, including one of the announcements of the ERG, which is the Employment Resource Group for Disabilities that's happening. Um, in addition, uh, I will be remiss to say that on July thirty first, the very next day, uh, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission will hold its annual disability conference titled Technology and Disability: The Intersection of Success. This conference is free. Myself, I would be taking a van, uh, from State College to Harrisburg for this conference, but if you can't attend in person, it is also available online. I also all these things, by the way, so you'll have access to it. And of course, Strategies for Justice will continue to hold its workshops on the intersection of race and disability, stemming from this year's powerful supposing, which again, I appreciate Patent Township being a part of that as well. And of course.
No, don't even.
Those who don't know, Chief Dolly is the reigning champion, uh, for rolling.
We've heard, we've heard a lot about it.
But in, in closing, to be serious, in closing, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize a significant loss we experienced in May with the passing of a giant in the ADA world. Patty Burns, the beloved co-founder and executive and artistic director of Sins Invalid, uh, passed away in May. She was, uh, they were, uh, the leader of the disability justice space and their contributions helped establish the ten principles of disability justice. I have used those principles myself in the trainings I've provided in the state of Washington, the state of Illinois, the state of Arizona, and of course here in Pennsylvania. And so I can attest to the really powerful legacy that Patty Burns has left behind. There is so much to say about the ADA, but again, I'm, I'm being mindful of time. So what I'm, I'm going to leave you with this. As, as we celebrate the thirty fifth anniversary of the ADA and recognize disability pride, I encourage everyone to reflect on how we as a community can work together to create a more accessible and inclusive world for people with disabilities. What actions can we take to foster empathy, appreciation and inclusion? Our population, which is often excluded from planning, curation and decision-making decisions. This question has been in my mind for my whole life, but this year it feels particularly very important. So I will conclude with a quote from the Penn State World Campus student, Tanja Jeffersons. Again, I'll send you the article with my mini links. She had a great quote in the article. She said, "Sharing my story, sharing the stories of the huge range of experiences of people living with a disability is how we create not just empathy, but appreciation for necessity and the importance of legislation like the ADA." So with that, let's learn from our youth. Remember equity and compliance are the floor, not the ceiling or the goal. Stay blessed and again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Terry. All right. Uh, so if I can, after those remarks, uh, read this proclamation, uh, celebrating the thirty fifth anniversary of Americans with Disabilities Act. Uh, whereas on July twenty sixth nineteen ninety, President George H. W. Bush assigned into law the American with Disabilities Act to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. This legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. On July twenty sixth, we will celebrate the anniversary of the signing of the ADA. Whereas the ADA had, has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing full participation in community life. However, the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if we remain committed to continue our efforts to fully implement the ADA. Now therefore be it resolved that on the thirty fifth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Patent Township Board of Supervisors celebrates and recognizes the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Adopted this ninth day of July twenty twenty five. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Any comments? All right. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Thank you. You guys want to get pictures there?
Yes.
Ready? All right, I'll send them to you there.
Real quickly before Terry leaves, can I have him just one second?
Ah, yes.
Just one second. I just wanted to publicly thank him for his support of our agency and his ongoing support, um, and helping us with our hiring process. Um, it's later on in my packet, but I saw him walking out the door. I just wanted to make sure he heard, uh, that before he left. So appreciate it all.
Terry, you can make sure to look, check back on YouTube to get seen at their, their clicks on those videos. Yeah, and I appreciate Terry's, uh, comments too and just the recognition that, um, individuals with disabilities, whether visible or invisible, are plentiful and they're very, um, much embedded in our local communities here. Um, and again, unfortunately, there's been, um, some rollback within, uh, you know, our larger, you know, federal government thinking through, um, protections for individuals with disabilities. And so just further encouragement, um, that we continue to, um, actualize this, this goal and this dream of, um, full compliant, ADA compliance. So, so that's what I have. All right, moving forward, uh, the twenty twenty six COG Strategic Guide for Services and Investment.
So Ben's going to come up and what I put at your place today was our compiled comments, which I got Betsy's and Susan's last night. And then Ben sent me back responses to the ones that we had before. So you have two documents, but they're kind of all there. So Ben's going to give you a little overview and then probably what we want to do is go through the comments because we have to send back only consensus comments. So the ones that we have some, uh, discussion on, we'll have to come up with a consensus comment on each thing.
Thank you, everybody. It's great to see you all again. Uh, just wanted to start off with kind of a recap of the change in this planning document from prior years. In the past, you would have, uh, gone through two separate, uh, processes, one for the CIP and another for the program plan. Uh, this was an effort to consolidate all of the information into one document so that you can see the entire process all at once. Um, the large effort is in making this a very usable document. It is large and I hope it is less large in future years. However, there's been a lot of deferred issues over time that show up in here, uh, for that. We're also trying to provide you with as much good information as possible. Uh, if you have looked through, you should see that there are a number of charts that actually are in a useful format and provide useful information to you. As years go on, there will be more useful information included in this. There have been a number of things that, pieces of information that have not been collected over the years. Uh, people had not necessarily asked for it, but they are key metrics that we should be using to look at performance of our agencies. And so we are starting to track those items. Uh, tracking our parks in the efficiency of parks operations has been a big theme over the last year that I started hearing in the budget process. You see a lot more parks information now. There will be more in the future. We are working on drilling all of those things down, but you have to start up at the top and kind of chisel your way through until you can get down to that program layer, which should be our goal, uh, so that you will have information on any particular park program that you are interested in in the future. Um, the document itself, whether you are using the digital version or the paper version, is set up to operate much like your municipal code is. Uh, so if you go to different sections, it is, uh, based on your budget code. So if you want the code new construction section, that is section C forty, and those are labeled C forty dash one, C forty dash two. So if we have to make any amendments to this, it's a single page that gets updated. You don't have to change everything that follows, uh, in the binders, uh, by doing it this way. Um, we will work very hard to encourage people to move to the digital format more and more in the future, uh, and save on the paper and all the binders. But we know that at least for the finance committee members, they really appreciate having that piece of paper in front of them as they go through all their notes. Um, so those are still being provided. Um, I also want to comment on the comment operating guidelines, which is another new item, uh, for this year and mostly to speak to the intent of comments for the, from the municipalities. And I'm just going to read directly from it. Municipal comments are intended to reflect a unified position or shared perspective of the governing body on SIGZI proposals, and SIGZI being the Strategic Guide for Services and Investments. Eventually we'll all get the acronym. And these comments are not votes or formal approvals, but valuable feedback that helps shape program direction and resource prioritization. If there is something that you don't have feelings on, there's no need to put a comment in on that item. Um, if you feel strongly for or against something, let's explore those items. Um, the way these will be used when we see consensus across our municipalities, those are items that we will simply include in the budget. That's not likely going to be many items that we see consensus across all of our communities. Where there, uh, is any kind of dissension, those will be added to the menu, uh, in that budget process for future debate and discussion. There are many items in here. I think there's fifty two separate proposals, uh, at least ranked proposals. Um, we certainly are not expecting all of these things to go through. Everything that is in here has gone through the committee process. So whether it was, you know, one of the cog committees, the library board or the Parks and Recreation Authority, everything in here has been vetted by one of those groups, which is why it is incredibly important that your members are reporting back to you on what they have learned in those meetings. I've already, through the comments I've received back from a number of communities so far, can tell that the information is not getting back to everybody. There's a lot of thing, a lot of questions being asked that have already been answered through those committee processes. So we want to make sure that that information is getting shared back to you because we did not want to bring, put anything into this binder that had not already been vetted by somebody representing your community. That doesn't mean that they're supporting putting it into the budget, just that they have seen it, they have heard the information and that they supported it moving forward for consideration. Your comments are not votes of approval. We still have a whole budget process to move through in the future, but this is a great opportunity to ask questions on anything in particular and have staff respond to those. One of the big changes from prior years is that my staff will respond to every one of the municipal comments that we receive on this. So you will not see any comments that say noted in the future. So you will not see any comments that say noted in the future. You are going to get an actual response from staff members on everything that comes to us. To that end, we can't have five comments from Patent Township on every single proposal, as well as eight from the borough and five from Harris. We're asking for one comment that reaches the consensus of your board for any particular issue, and we will respond to that. We can't promise that we are going to satisfy what it is that you might have a problem with on that. There are going to be times where we're going to respond saying, we appreciate this information. We have taken it under consideration. However, we can't get around it because of X, Y, or Z. Here's how we will mitigate the issues that you have brought up. So we, we can't promise to satisfy everything that everybody has an issue with, but we will at least address them for you. We will also, as described in the past, do an Amazon-style comment section so that the top positive and top negative comment are going to get equal billing in the document. So if only one community brings up an issue with a certain proposal, we will highlight that negative comment on it to make sure that everybody is seeing it because that might lead those other communities to see something they didn't see before. So we're going to bring attention to those kinds of items. Every comment will be included, but we will at least give equal billing to the positive and the negative that come with it. I think that hits the majority of the items that I wanted to cover, and I'm happy to answer questions. I'm also joined by our finance director, Kim McMullin, and our codes agency director, Walt Schneider. Saw a good number of questions on codes issues, so I thought it would be best if we bring Walt in here. Do want to address at least kind of one of the items that I see, which is an education item for us for the future, is making sure that all of our elected officials understand all of COGS operations. Our code agency is a full-service agency, so all of the inspections that you might see in a construction project happen in-house. There are no outside third-party inspectors. Everything is done inside. So on one, there was a comment for the electronic plane review tables and the use for third-parties. Those are, those are all our inspectors. Walt just listed all of the different inspectors that we have within the office that use those types of devices. We do not have third-party inspectors in the center region. These are all cog staff. And code is the one enterprise agency that has been self-funded since nineteen seventy-eight. Is that correct here? Okay. I'm still learning, but we have gone quite a long time of being completely self-funded in that agency, and that has benefited COGS as a whole in, in a wide number of areas. For example, the library delivery vehicle, the group that comes, comes around, delivers books to people, picks up books from locations. That is an old code vehicle that was donated to the library once it reached its useful life in the code agency. It still had more life than it could have, just not up to the standards of that daily use for going out into the field for inspections, where they tend to get beat up pretty good. But it could be salvaged for easy driving. We have at least one truck in the parks agency that is a code truck. In the past, they've had a couple cars in the parks agency as well. And anytime you see a replacement of equipment in the codes office, that is typically being repurposed somewhere else into one of our other agencies. The electronic whiteboards that are in here, that are in the code offices that are proposed to be replaced, those will find space up in the admin office and the planning agency for the future. So we move their old tech, their old equipment into other agencies, and we use them until they are dead, and then the code office replenishes with their, with their new equipment since they are the primary users of those. It does not mean that you have to continue to support those kinds of efforts. We just want to make sure that everyone is clear that we use everything until it is unusable. As you saw, I think we have the one parks trailer that is now, we have forty-four, forty-five years old that we are finally looking to replace, but that, that has been used well and good up to this point. We've put a lot of miles on it. So if there are specific questions that I can answer or that Kim or Walt can answer, I'm happy to address those. Or if you have others that I cannot answer, I will write them down, and one of the other agency directors will, will come back.
So before we start, I'd also just like to recognize that we have Clara Franklin, who is our representative to the Center Region Parks and Rec Authority, also in the audience. So I think that's also good because she can take back some of your comments to the authority meetings as well.
Hey, Claire. So I'll open it up to any comments. I guess historically, we literally went through item by item to get a consensus.
Yeah, and I think there are a lot that we're all on the same page on, so we can skip through, or that one, only, only one person said I approve, nobody else said anything. And so I think if we see something that just has one comment or two comments that are, yes, we approve, we can skip over discussing those and kind of hit the ones that we have more discussion on, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Then do you, could you lead us through?
I'd be happy to.
Please.
Shall we sit down or just stay up here?
You, you can stay up there if you want to. Standing is good. Okay.
Want to get a chair? You need a chair, Ben?
I'm okay. I'm okay. Thanks.
Okay. So the first one that we had comment on was Parks and Rec Operating Budget C twenty, and that was the money for the computerized maintenance management software and tablets. My comment on this was that I would only support this if we are using this to move to an acreage-based fee for service. Right now, we pay Parks and Rec a flat fee to maintain our parks and do the programming, and they're maintaining over two hundred acres of parkland for Patent Township. Pam had a comment, how old this, is this software that the Parks and Recreation are using presently? How many tablets are needed, and will staff need to be trained on using the new software? Will the training be another cost? Or will the training, if any, be included with the updated software? And I think Christie did clarify, this is new software. They don't do this now. They have no way to.
We do this all by hand currently.
There's no.
There's no track. And that has, just to go back to the piece about the maintenance per acreage, that's been a discussion from three agency directors ago that we started having. Susan Wheeler and I met with Christie Owens and Jim Carpenter at the end of last year, and we were looking at seeing if we could form an MOU with the COGS that said this is the services they would provide to our parks because there is a gap, and then we need to fill, fill that gap with our staff or hire seasonal staff on our own. So that's my support for this would be, this would help us get to that ability to move to a different model, and then everybody could contract for services, and that helps the COGS because then they know what's expected of them. Right now, it's like COGS does everything, and then it's harder when you have, we have a lot of parks out here. We have big parks. Ferguson's in the same boat. They have large parks as well, so.
Yeah.
So what do you feel?
Well, I think probably just in agreement with, with your messaging was.
Do you want to include any of Pam's comments about, you know, the cost for the training perhaps on this since it's new software?
No.
No?
I've already talked to Christie.
Okay.
About it, so I'm good.
Okay, so just my comment about moving to an acreage-based service, fee for service.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and Ben, I know you had said it's, you know, incumbent upon elected officials to come back from these committees and, and share with the group and our own, like, there's a lot I just don't know about the operations among COGS. And, and so I appreciate the, the insight that you gave because, I mean, when it came to cars and, you know, some of the tablet, well, whatever, whiteboards and stuff, I was definitely the one like, uh, why?
We, we completely understand that. Amy and I have had a conversation about this, that we're going to get COGS back to a better onboarding process for newly elected officials like it was before COVID, where, once the new year comes in, because we know we have some newly elected officials that will be joining us in a number of communities, we'll open it up to existing elected officials as well, but we will set up tours of our facilities and kind of walk people through the whole COGS operation so that you all have a better understanding of the totality of what we do.
Yeah. But also, I mean, the nuances of, you know, I can know something about the unit but not really know that, oh, we try to stay up to date with the technology, with code, and we typically offload then their old stuff to other units to, like, that stuff we wouldn't necessarily know. So the nuance and, and is helpful, and I don't know if there was a document that qualified some of these, like, some of this stuff, but I think that, like, what you're providing now is like really helpful, and I probably would not have had the comments I had, had I had that.
It's quite, I mean, it's why we have the comment period and the question period is to address these kinds of things. Not being here even a year yet, I don't know all of what everybody doesn't know about us yet. So I'm learning as you're learning as well, and we'll, we'll find the balance shortly.
Got it.
And we do need to go back because I was using the wrong version of this, and we did have two comments on the very first item, which is the training. We had a comment from Betsy that she partially supports the additional training, but she said, can staff prioritize the types of training within this category? Is playground safety inspection more important than natural resources management, for example? Staff could then delay stagger training across several years. And Susan said, this seems like a lot of money for training is it onsite? And that would be the very first item. So what do we want to say on that?
I can at least address the first one. I can't address whether it is onsite or not. Both of these items are going to be important for us. We have only had two certified playground inspectors, and we are trying to expand that to make sure that every playground is getting the necessary inspections on a regular basis. And that is very difficult to do. Jim Carpenter is one of the two, and we need him for a lot of other things as well. Plus, we have just this year moved the one position to a natural resources-focused position, and we need to get that employee trained up shortly. That's not necessarily an ongoing kind of thing where they need annual training for that, but we, we do need to build up the playground inspections, and we need to get this one new employee trained on the natural resources. I can't answer whether the training is onsite, but from my experience with training sessions, five thousand dollars for multiple trainings is not out of the norm from what I would expect.
So you need, they need certifications and things like that?
For, for playground inspections, that's definitely a certification.
Okay.
Yes.
So what does the board feel?
Yeah, I mean, for me, you know, five thousand dollars for a training, especially not knowing the training, but there's a few different topics, like, five thousand dollars is not unreasonable for training, so that seems actually pretty mi- minor. So I don't, I don't know if I would necessarily agree with that, but you said we have to come to a consensus, so I'm fine putting it in there.
Putting it in. Betsy's comment?
Yeah.
Saying we support and then adding her comment? Okay. Okay. We talked about the second one. Okay. Next one is on the Vermont REC Track software. Pam had a question, what does Vermont REC Track have that REC DES doesn't have that is what is needed? Has anyone talked to other agencies that have used the REC Track to see if they were satisfied? Betsy supported, and Susan asked, does this include training for REC Track, which is a steeper learning curve?
And Christie provided a response, which you'll see in the, one of the two documents that you have. On the first question on this, REC Track offers a more robust platform than REC DES with integrated tools for facility scheduling, point-of-sales, memberships, and more advanced reporting. These features are designed for larger, more complex operations and may better support CRPR's long-term needs. However, there is a learning curve, and while some agencies report satisfaction with its capabilities, particularly around reporting and flexibility, others have noted challenges with ease of use in staff training. We're continuing to reach out to agencies that are using the system to get their feedback. Although REC Track may offer potential savings on processing fees, the agency is still exploring both customer and staffing impacts. As a result, we are considering postponing the transition to next year to allow more time for evaluation, reference checks, and planning for successful implementation.
Sounds like she's had the same thought I did.
Right. So why don't we say we support, but then include Susan's question?
And usually those contracts will include training? I mean.
Yeah, usually the training is built into it, yeah.
Okay. Next one is the concession building for Whitehall Road Regional Park. I questioned who's going to staff it, and I don't think this should be considered till we have a staffing plan, and I know Christie did respond that they'll do that once this is all sort of done next year. Betsy was a reluctant yes. She disagrees with the concession, general consensus to add a concession stand at Whitehall Road, but since COGS voted to construct a concession stand, it might as well be done in the most practical, efficient manner, and Susan supported it. Support with the concerns from Betsy? Or support with concerns about staffing or just support?
I'm supporting.
I would just support with the staffing.
Ben, may I ask a question about the concession stand?
Yes, you may. I might not be able to answer, but I will try.
Larry, it will not be.
You know, when I looked at this at first, I thought, well, jeez, where's, where's the cost for the equipment? And then later on, I found in regional parks, the cost of the equipment. And the cost for the equipment is only ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, it seems very low.
Well, I don't know if we had any comments on it or not, but.
I, I do believe, oh, and.
We could come to it when the time comes.
Yeah, I think we do have a comment. I know Pam did.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll head it when the time comes, Ben. I'll, I'll table my question.
Thank you.
If there are any public comments, just make sure that you bring it up when the item actually comes.
Okay. Look, we're moving right along. Look at that. Turn the page. Okay. Next item. The new initiative would be the sponsorship model to support parks, youth programs, special events, and tournaments. Suton was in support of this. I was in support of this. Betsy's in support of it. Susan is agnostic on this one. I love that.
Agnostic.
I just really wanted to say that. And Betsy had a great comment about it's a no-brainer, and then she said about talking to some folks in the community as well. Do you want to say support and then include Betsy's comment about, I thought it was a good comment about talking to some folks in the community?
Yep.
Next one is funding to replace the nineteen eighty-one trailer. Betsy says tentatively, partially, she says, given a total cost of a hundred, this is for the next four pieces of equipment in the parks agency, hundred of seventeen thousand dollars total of four pieces of equipment proposed being considered being replaced in twenty twenty-six. Can staff rank order them should budget considerations call for a lower amount? Suton wasn't sure what capabilities would be improved. His suggestion was to continue using the old trailer until it's unfit to be used. And Susan said, and I love this one too, may that nineteen eighty-one trailer rest in peace.
That's pretty old.
It's pretty chicken.
All right. First of all, we have initials there, so you ain't calling me out for some of your comments. SM.
So, so Kim, Kim, on this item, is, is this something that we have been putting money aside for over the life of the Gator? Maybe not the trailer. I don't think we were putting a dollar ninety-five a year away for forty-five years on the trailer. But, you know, on the Gator, which is a replacement, and the skid steer is a replacement, do we have a replacement schedule that we're, that we're funding year to year?
No.
Okay.
But we are working on implementing that. So Sam, who, Brayson Brockman, who's another proposal in here, has been working through the Tracer system to be able to get that set up for all of COGS agencies so that we can begin asset tracking across the board so that he can establish both vehicle and equipment maintenance plans along with our facility maintenance plans. That way, we can begin to run things the proper way for the future. I can't go back in time.
Thank you.
So would you just want to include, since Betsy's comment is a lot of, Suton's comment as well, about the total cost of the equipment prioritizing, and just say we partially support it with that note?
Yep. I'm good.
You good with that, Suton?
Yep.
All right, next one. This is again, this is another equipment piece, and this is the skid steer. Susan's in favor of it. She said if it's a safety concern, to approve it. Suton again had a comment about deferring the expense, and Betsy had her same comment. I would suggest. I would suggest maybe we make that comment for the equipment in here because I think that's a good comment about ranking them.
Just so, these are all ranked already?
Yeah, yeah.
And so everybody understands the agencies themselves rank within their agencies. The COG ranking is the Ben ranking, which is the across-the-board ranking. You'll notice that the COG ranking does not rank anything that doesn't have a cost associated with it. I'm not ranking, can we go out for a grant to do this thing? Can we eliminate these positions that don't exist? Those aren't included in that ranking system.
Yeah. So I was cognizant of that. I think when people don't get everything that they want, I think sometimes then a ranking might change in future prioritizing. So that's, yeah.
So you want to keep Betsy's comment?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, next one is the two-post mobile lift. My comment was, I just think this seems low because we bought lifts when I was over in Harris Township and they were a lot more money. And Susan supported it as a safety concern. And Betsy again had her comment about ranking.
Christie did respond to at least your comment, which we had from earlier, which the cost estimate is based on a verbal quote from one of our vendors.
So we do not want to comment that it seems low.
No, we'll take that out. Doesn't seem low. Any, do you want to go with Betsy or do you want to add in if it's a safety concern, approve of making?
Well, that could work. I just want them to be.
You want to do the safety comment?
Yep.
Okay. Got it. Okay, next one is the John Deere Gator with the electric utility vehicle. Suton says this seems appropriate. Betsy again made her comment. Susan approved. So it sounds like we approved this one. Okay, on to fire. First one is you both approved it with Suton and Susan on the new captain position. So we'll send that as approved. Next one was the funding approved to purchase a duty officer vehicle. Suton's comment was, are we, are used vehicles an option for this position? And Susan was in support.
I do not yet have, this was the only comment submitted earlier that I do not yet have a response.
Okay.
Back on. Sean was doing a tabletop exercise. So he has not been available to, to respond yet.
So do you want your comment to be approved, but suggest looking at a used vehicle?
Yep.
Yeah?
And I'm aware like, you know, police officers, you kind of need like new vehicles because you got to retrofit some things. I didn't know if that was the same for, I imagine some fire vehicles, yes. But if it's just like a regular car cruiser.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I think it would depend on how many miles they.
Thank you.
Yep.
So the, the duty officer view, this is the same as the one that was just purchased. That we had the whole long debate over additional funding for. It's that same type of vehicle for those duty officers to respond. It's just a different officer within the, the operation that would be using this vehicle as opposed to the other one.
So let's take some funds back from that other discussion.
Those are already back. They were never touched.
Next one, HVAC units at the Borough Fire Station. Suton had some questions. Susan supported the gain in efficiency. Said it was worth the cost.
Yeah, I think, I can't remember how old they were, but they're like crazy old.
Yeah.
They are from 1996.
Thank you.
So Mr. Bryson Brockman responded to this, to Mr. McGruder's comments. The units in question are package unit heating and cooling, the kitchen and meeting room. These units date 1996 and will reach 30 years of service in 2026. The expected useful life of a rooftop package is 15 to 20 years. I'm not going to read you everything in here. Basically, this area serves as potential emergency gathering space. Over the last few years, there's been an increase in outages of this particular equipment. They've done an outstanding job maintaining them to get them to this age as these are the oldest package units in service at that station. It may be possible to split the two pieces of equipment to be replaced year over year. But the installation and removal would require a crane. So you would lose out on savings of one crane pick.
Ignore my comment, then I approve it.
And go with Susan's comment? All right, next one, emergency management contingency budget. I just made a note or a question that should we consider an increase for 2026? This is something that's come up with public safety and also with the Emergency Management Council, so.
I would say this isn't a budget proposal, so we didn't include it from the COG side. You are welcome to register a comment on that age, on that section.
Probably just something to think about as our subcommittees work forward on that. Are you okay with keeping that?
Yep.
Okay, next one. Now we're getting into code. Hi, Walt. First one is the new construction program, replace an existing Ford Escape fleet vehicle. Suton's comment was unless there are critical issues with the Ford Escape, I would suggest that we defer the purchase of a new vehicle electing for routine maintenance. And Susan was in support.
All of your responses are here. Any new questions over there?
So we have a significant size fleet because of all the field inspectors. And if we push off the normal replacement schedule, then basically all we're doing is bunching a rope up. We dealt with that a number of years ago because of COVID. And we found we're better off trying to have a smoothing and we're actually trying to do better smoothing out that replacement schedule as compared to trying to bunch it up. In addition, as Bennett said earlier, any vehicles that we have that we are replacing, then the first thing we do is we reach out to the other COG agencies to see if they would like to use them. So for example, the vehicle that was reached out and given to the library, we would reach out and find out, okay, how's that from a maintenance standpoint? Or is it hitting the end of its true usable life? And would we replace that with one of these slightly newer vehicles? Do the same thing for parks. We've reached out to, for example, admin for the same thing. And so, and then once we reach out there, we reach out to the municipalities and keep extending out. And we've in the past also, any of the vehicles that we've felt that are no longer serviceable at all, then have been donated either to the State College School District for use in their automotive technology program, either their body shop or their automotive technology program with respect to the mechanic side. Or they've been donated to the CPI facility where the fire department then uses them for rescue training. So we, our goal is to try and get three, if not four, lives out of every one of our vehicles as best we can to the point where we've get everybody usable life even beyond what most people would determine usable life for them. And also when we basically donate them to other agencies or other municipalities, we make sure they're in the best possible shape under our side of things so that their cost is minimal.
So, say you.
I mean, I've got egg on my face. I'm fine. Let's do it.
So we're going to say support?
Support. How many, how many vehicles are in your fleet anyway?
Right now, if we count the F-350 for a towing vehicle, I believe we are at a fleet of 22.
Yeah, okay. So y'all have like four or five in here. It's not actually.
And we're trying, again, we're trying to smooth it out, but we get into that. We've bought them in the past in bunches in some respects because of just the age of the fleet. And we've also found because like during COVID, we pushed off purchases. Well, we didn't respread them out because again, if by the time they're getting into seven or eight year, you know, after they get past our seven-year number for us, that eight, nine, 10, they were extreme costs. And the Ford Escapes had a problem with rusting out of frames with some past models. So we have some that truly were not, I mean, they were truly donated to the fire department to use for rescue training. They couldn't be used by anybody else because they wouldn't pass inspection. So we're dealing with some of that as well that we're trying to work on that smoothing.
That's helpful.
Okay, so the next one is.
Excuse me, comment?
Oh, sorry.
Susan, where's the rub?
I just want to add, Walt, if you can just bring me up to speed. I do believe that you continue to do this kind of report, not only for our municipalities, but you do it at our general forum meeting. I guess I, because I've sat through so many of this, going through over and over and over again. I know we have new elected officials, but the necessity of how we use equipment till it's about to drop dead. And then we fix it up to move it to another department. And as you have stated, we have actually donated it to the schools. And how it's always used, everything we do. And I can attest, being on the Public Safety Committee for Sean Kaufman, Fire and for Walt Code, that they continue to try to be transparent and work to make sure all the information and all the equipment and the staffing that they need, that they bring forth. Now, if we don't bring it, if I as your representative for public safety is not in my report, it is definitely brought up at our general forum. So as we're moving forward, I would just like to, just like to say, being on the committee, the Public Safety Committee and working with Sean Kaufman as our fire director and Walt, you guys continue to do your research, do your due diligence in making sure that things are running smoothly. And I just also like to put on record, for Ben just getting here and moving things the way we are supposed to be, thank you. Kimberly for finance. Larry can attest, she has moved mountains for us to keep us on point, you know? And Kimberly, if you don't hear it often enough, you have done an extraordinary job, you know? So as we're moving forward on this, for, I'm, I'm saying for COG and Fire, I'm, I'm in support.
Okay, next, next one is on the two existing Ford Escape fleet vehicles with two Ford Hybrid Escapes.
Let it go.
You're okay?
Yep.
Okay, next one is the electronic plan review tables, which Ben explained earlier. Are you inclined now, Suton, to be okay with that?
I don't know. We're attacking Suton right there.
Bust it.
Ignore my comment.
Okay, we'll move forward with that. The whiteboards, are we in support of the whiteboards? Since they're going to move upstairs. I love my whiteboard. Everybody needs a whiteboard. Okay. Okay, the next code vehicle, we're in support of that?
Yep.
Okay, I'm sensing a theme. So we can move this along a little faster. The next two, three comments, we only had one comment from Susan. Those were all in support of everyone. So if you're okay, we'll move those three forward. I should go four, the existing structures, replacement of the Ford Escape. Susan's supportive. We didn't have any other comments. Existing structures replace a Ford 350, are we okay with this or do you still have some questions, Mr. Chair?
I mean, I looked it up. I know it's only a few thousand each sort of like.
So I'm going to jump in and give you a little bit of quick background. So we have three fire safety trailers that we have in the fleet where we do fire safety education. With our goal is to reduce the number of fire calls or reduce the severity of the fire calls. We do an extensive amount of public education. An example is we come to Patent Safety Fair. We do Lion Bash in the Borough. We do Camp Cadet, for example, over at Camp Blue Diamond, which is all Center County citizens, even though it's happening in Huntington County. We'll be there for multiple, we'll be there for actually the entire length of time teaching young folks from Center County about fire safety as part of that program, which we really love. We've been doing it now for probably 10-plus years. What we have found is the gross vehicle weight of the trailers is, the largest one is 15,600 pounds. The F-350 that we've had for 10 years now, while it will pull okay on flat, trying to take it down the mountain with that trailer, we feel that, and we don't take this lightly, that we want to step up to a 450 or a 550 depending on availability because of the safety of taking that over to those resources. And when that trailer travels, we want to make sure that our staff is safe as possible. The 350 will be transferred. We've already have an agreement if this would go forward to transfer that to the fire service. The last one that we transferred a bunch of years ago was used by parks for, I believe, nine years before it was retired last year finally. Sean Kaufman would use this from the fire service standpoint as a vehicle for use for the fire service for a number of years to come. And so if we were to replace the F-350 with another 350, honestly, I would hold on to the 350. But it was because of a safety measure is why we want to step that up to a 450 or a 550 depending on availability. We found that depending on what's sitting on a lot, they might be the same price. But that's the reason why we wanted to make that step up was because of safety in traveling with that trailer. And this, we anticipate to having a 10-plus year life again with the agency and we take care of it. It gets stored under roof at a facility that we rent at Ferguson Township. And it's part of that fire safety education piece.
So what say you? Support?
Yeah, I support.
Okay. All right, next one is the fire safety trailers. Susan's supportive. And then we had a comment or question about the possibility of renovating to extend their useful life.
So a little bit of explanation here is the two larger trailers, one is 25 years old. It has had a live fire. If you've been to the safety fair and saw that fire safety trailer, we do a live burn in it. It has been heat cycled so many times. We've actually replaced the fire sprinkler guts out of it at least once in whole. We've been replacing parts over the years, but we're now getting to the point where you just can't replace the parts anymore. So we're recommending replacement of that large trailer with a purpose-built fire sprinkler trailer. We would buy a flatbed trailer and then have a fabricator do what we need to do, basically assembling parts and doing the plumbing piece and the fabrication piece for the burn trailer. The second trailer, which is 10 years old, is an primarily electronic trailer. It has the ability to give you immersive experience where you use a fire extinguisher that is electronic and you go into an environment that is smoke-filled and allows you to actually put out fires using an electronic fire extinguisher. If you do so incorrectly, the fire gets larger. It's a really great experience, especially when one of our target groups is 18 to 24-year-olds where they want that more, how should I say, video game kind of experience. And while the trailer's 10 years old and is in great shape, the electronics are to the point where the technology now is we're generations beyond and is no longer functioning properly. And so that is just a renovation. We're not going to do anything structurally to the trailer itself. We've reached out to the trailer manufacturer and have, or working with them to, a price to basically rehab the electronics in the trailer. Most of the existing props will be able to still be used. We want to add one or two new props based on the technology that has changed in the last 10 years, again, to provide that immersive experience. Because one of the things we're having a challenge reaching out to is dealing with the young folks today and keeping their interest and making them feel like it's real. And so that one actually is a true renovation. The trailer itself's in great shape. The generator that goes with it to run it's in great shape. It's really the electronics. So our goal is to best bang for the buck, to be able to get a trailer that we can get the fire sprinkler experience piece in a more efficient standpoint, and then the large immersive trailer to just upgrade its electronics and get it probably another ten years of life.
Well, I mean, I support it and probably put in there that Suton should probably test out the, the new stuff.
I'm not putting that in our comment.
And I will, and I will give you an off, we actually have one of the electronic, we have a portable electronic fire extinguisher trainer. If the manager would like, we would be more than excited to bring it over and let you experience it. We just did a really neat
It's more if the chair would like, not the manager, I'm gonna get overruled on this one.
But we, we had a really great experience recently where we did one for a local business. We actually smoked up their lobby space and all of their staff did that in a smoke environment. It's theatrical smoke, but they said this was truly something totally different and exciting.
Stop smiling, go, just go ahead and smile.
I mean, you said theatrical smoke, and now I'm like, I'm in, we can have a whole dinner theater thing. Just do it like Halloween. Yes.
First of all, yes, let's talk to each other, let's get that planned this summer before the semester starts. The other question is, do I get to wear a fire suit?
If you want to do that, I will, I will work with the, we actually have a hose end that does the electronic panel as well, so I can work with the fire director to be able to give you the full immersive experience with the turnout gear as well.
All right, well, first of all, I started working out again recently, so I also want to like, you know, do that, run up the ladder thing, pull it up.
Yeah, here's the, and here's the best one, I can tell you though, at the end of that, will also come an application for the Alpha Volunteer Fire Company. They would love you to have these.
Is this a paid volunteer position?
No.
Volunteer.
Nope, volunteer.
And when your wife, uh,
Thank you.
Gets mad at you, you can stay right over here.
Do we have a pole over there to slide down? There's no pole?
We don't use poles anywhere. Too much liability.
Too much liability.
Well.
And they call me old.
All right, well, okay, ignore my comments, I'm in full support of this.
Oh, no, 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 we've written down the comments about wanting to volunteer.
Yeah, the appropriate people will be in touch. Okay, next one was on the position of the person who is gonna retire and trying to fund that early. There were two in support, and then Suton had a couple of questions about, or not questions, thoughts, about the few unfunded positions in code, just prioritize which positions are needing to be filled.
So the two positions we're requesting, one is in the new construction side of the department, so that looks at new building construction or renovations, those kinds of things. So that's one for a field inspector. This one is funded through the existing structures program, which is rental housing and commercial fire inspection. This is the individual who is leaving, she has been gracious enough to let us know, basically, almost two years in advance of her wanting to retire. She has been in the position now for, give or take, twenty years. She manages from a, dealing with, directly with the public, almost twenty-five thousand permits, when we talk between rental housing and fire licenses. So she deals with twenty-five thousand of those and all the rental companies and so on, and all the businesses. On the other side, she actually supports twelve, actually thirteen, twelve field inspectors on that side of things. Thirteen if you count me asking her questions and so on and dealing with that. So this is an integral part throughout the year, there's ebbs and tides as to what she's dealing with on those different programs. And so to me, we have an incredible opportunity here to be able to maintain the high level of customer service that we have tried to portray to the region and be able to have somebody shadow her throughout the year so that the customer sees little to no effect when she retires and the new person is in the seat. And so we're recommending that shadowing occur over the entire year. And really, to me, it's the gold standard that we can provide from a customer service standpoint. Because quite honestly, come August, things will get totally frustrated, people get heated because, you know, we've got students moving back into town, all this change, we've got parents calling in, asking questions. This is the person that is that initial person who's dealing with that. And it'd be great to be able to have the opportunity, to be able to have that person shadow throughout, so that way it's seamless. But the, the two positions are funded out of two different funds, ones out of forty, ones out of forty-one. And we provide that funding, I've been told the entire seventeen years I've been here, that new construction funds new construction, existing structures funds existing structures. There are some of us that are split, there's three of us in the agency that are dual funds, come out of both, but it's a dictated percentage, so they're not really a pick one over the other because they're two different funding streams, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So, I mean, we can go with your comment.
To support. Okay. All right, on to planning, thank you, Walt.
Thank you.
The first one's about the AmeriCorps, I'll just note that we had three comments, well, two comments in support. Susan noted a contingency plan for this position being put in place. Pam Adams did send an email to Ben and I late today, there is sort of a contingency plan to get some funding for this. So I think the comment should be, we support, but a contingency plan needs to be put in place because this funding is really up in the air.
Yeah, we don't want to have someone come and then have the rug pulled out from under them.
And it's a, I mean, it's a great program, and it's great what they do, but we can't, right. Okay, next one is
Can we have Betsy's, the starter Betsy's comment there?
Yeah, I'll actually add Betsy's comment in, because I think that's
No, just, just the, yes.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, she's very supportive of this, which I agree with. The next one we all agree on is the internship budget, increasing it from thirty-six hundred to fifty-one hundred. And they're doing a lot of interns from Penn State School, Papa Ponce, as well. Next one is removing an unfunded senior land use planner. So Betsy was in support of that, my comment was, I really think, so what Sean's done with the fire program, and I talked about this this morning, I think this is one of the greatest things he's done, he put together a strategic working group, and it's the police chiefs, it's the managers, it's the Bolzberg Fire Company, it's Center Life Link, and we're talking about the future of the fire program. We really are long overdue to do this for CRPA, because CRPA is at a transition point where, what does regional planning look like, if it even looks like anything at all, be on the comp plan? What does local planning look like, which it's not, not gonna probably look like it does now next year? And I know that's one of the things our new assistant manager for Public Works and I are gonna have a long discussion about. So I think that there would be a huge benefit to getting the managers and whoever else we feel should be on the strategic group together, to really have this conversation that probably should have been had fifteen years ago about CRPA and what we want to see happen. And then, you know, look at, we're more of a sustainability focus now than we have been in the past. And do we just want to focus on transportation, sustainability, and the comp plan? And then kind of let the other stuff fall by the, not fall by the wayside, but kind of be put on pause for right now? So if you're okay with that comment, we could make that comment. Okay. Next one, Susan, was the operating budget, funds approved for a regional safety study. Susan said safety comes first. Please let me include these comments, because I love them. Next one was CCMPO, fifteen hours per quarter for invoicing and reporting. Susan was the only comment on that, she said that was a priority, so I think we're okay with that one. Onto administration, this one was about the facilities administrator position being renamed to facilities manager and reclassified. Susan had said this seems like quite a leap, and she'd like to know a little more.
Certainly. So this went through both Facilities Committee and the HR Committee. Sam Bryson Brockman came on shortly after I did, and he has fulfilled every hope that we had for our facilities position. One of the exercises I had to do, though, was to do the classification study on his position again. So we have documents from when the class and comp study took place on how the evaluations of every position in the COG are evaluated, and that helps determine which band they should sit in. Sam provided his feedback on what he is working on, I provided my own because Sam is working beyond his job description currently, extremely beyond his job description. If I cannot move him to a different band, I have to cut back on the work that he is doing because he is doing far more for us than what we are paying him to do.
Makes sense, and I can relate.
He is certainly saving us more through the efficiencies that he has brought to us than what this will, will cost us. This should secure us a great employee for a long time.
Will we support?
Yeah.
Okay. The next one was on the time and attendance module, Susan was the only comment, and that was that it was supported. Same with the Keystone payroll, again, the only comment was a support. Onboarding, same thing. Okay, so now we're on to the positions that we're talking about removing. So the deputy executive director position, the only comment was from me, and I was supported removing that from the plan, staffing plan. Same with the grant writer administrator, the IT administrator, and the communications administrator. Are you okay with those comments, supporting the removal of those positions? Goodness, we're moving right along. Okay, building capital. This one is the funds be approved for the phased replacement or renovation of all the HVAC equipment located in the attic of the COG building. Susan and I supported, I suggested to look for funding from the local share program, the statewide gaming program. Suton wants a more detailed plan for how this is enacted.
I can go through, Sam did respond today, which you should have there. The limited budget included for HVAC replacement in 2025 would likely be rolled into this new additional funding. This additional funding is anticipated to cover the planning and removal and replacement of portions of the ceiling and replacing the equipment in the attic. I'm gonna take a step back here and add some context for you. If you remember, the original plan was to remove a section of the roof because there is no access for the equipment in there. Sam would like to go back to how the building was set up to begin with, cut a hole in the ceiling, most likely in the hallway outside of his office, which is the old copy room on the second floor, and lift the equipment up from there, bring the equipment in and out internally so that we do not have to take apart a roof that is still in decent shape. We should be able to, we're hoping one access hatch will be enough, but we may need to add one hatch down each hallway. We would turn these into actual hatches for future repair needs and not drywall over them like they did when they built our building, which is why he's talking about cutting open the ceiling. We are replacing equipment with the new train models, with the new refrigerant that will operate more efficiently than the twenty-four-year-old models. Equipment and construction costs can be susceptible to inflation. We have attempted to capture that in the number proposed. In the event that costs exceeds the budget number proposed, we will alter the scope and request additional funds for 2027 to be included with the next phase to complete the replacement of the HVAC equipment in the first floor of the building. There are thirteen units that need to be replaced in the attic and seven units that need to be replaced in the first floor ceiling. Four units were already replaced in recent years with the renovation of the code office. These are all the original pieces of equipment from when the building was built. There was a study that was done that had a proposed phasing of, of that, I can't remember the name. Walt, do you remember the name of the company that did that study for the HVAC?
The, the manager Reese. Reese Hackman.
Reese Hackman, yes, that was, Reese Hackman did a study for COG, I believe that was two years ago, that examined all the equipment and set up a proposed schedule for the replacement of those in the most efficient order, based on current needs. And then these are the things that should be replaced over the next several years. That is an entire plan document, so not necessarily appropriate for the comments here, but we can give you a copy of, of that Reese Hackman plan.
So what do you say? Support?
I didn't realize Sam was in the old copy room, I think we should rethink giving him a raise. Geez, I aspire to someday be in the old copy room myself.
He lives in a closet.
We can make that happen.
Yeah, I'm sure you could.
Okay, next one, Susan was the only comment, she supported the UPS backup. And the one after that, Susan, Susan again was the only comment supporting the COG building improvements, the water heater and such. Next one that we had comments on, Milbrook Marsh Nature Center. Susan would like to know more about how the funds would be allocated. Suton also had a question about, didn't we discuss in the past, third-party funding for Milbrook Marsh? What are the details of this effort? I'm not sure I'd support this endeavor with limited information.
Again, I have Christie's response for Mr. McGruder's comments. The agency is actively advancing a phased planning and funding strategy, which will be strengthened by the arrival of the new nature center supervisor in mid-August. Their leadership will help guide next steps in design coordination, grant readiness, and community engagement. Yes, third-party funding for the Milbrook Marsh boardwalk replacement has been discussed previously, and that strategy remains central to how we plan to move the project forward. In April 2025, Parks Capital Committee began outlining a multi-source funding approach, combining municipal contributions for early planning and design, grant opportunities such as DCNR or private foundations, and a private fundraising, fundraising campaign led by CRPR staff. The agency is preparing to launch the Beyond the Boardwalk Capital Campaign, which will focus on engaging donors, exploring sponsorships, and offering naming opportunities for sections of the new structure. This will complement grant-seeking efforts, which depend on having preliminary design and site planning in place to be competitive.
So how do we feel about this?
Well, it feels like it's kind of in a bind, right? Because you need some municipal contributions to get this started. Third-party sort of like funding efforts can coincide with that, but may come afterward. But you're asking for a range, and we're like, we want a plan. So how can you synthesize what I just said, or if any other supervisors have thoughts on how to word that?
Yeah, I feel the same way, and I'm wondering how, doesn't Penn State own this land?
Yeah, Penn State does, we have a ninety-nine-year lease with Penn State, right? Isn't it ninety-nine years? It might not be ninety-nine years.
No, it is not, we are at, what are we at now? Fifty-four, I think it's in your SIGZ documents, I believe, I think it's fifty-four years. We had about, I think it was four years remaining. Once the nature center Phase Two was brought online, that kick triggered a fifty-year extension on the lease.
They got a good deal.
Yeah, we had, just to give you some background on that, Susan, we had a lot of discussion when Phase Two was being, being planned, that, hey, what happens if we build this building and Penn State comes in and decides, because we only have yeah, we only have a few more years, so they went and renegotiated. So we feel a lot more confident that, that we'll get the use out of the building before Penn State decides to come back and take the land.
It was forty years, so we have, lease expires January first, 2064.
So maybe the comment back is, we understand the need for a strategic path forward, however, we need a more concrete idea of what that's gonna cost.
Yeah. We plan.
Yeah, I think if they need some seed money for grants or stuff like that.
The, this request is for seed money for planning.
Yeah, just for planning, that's a lot.
So that we can then do grant and fundraising for construction.
Exactly, but I think we need to know a little bit more about
Certainly.
the, the grant and the fundraising, I would agree with that.
Okay. All right. Next one is some essential projects to address longstanding accessibility needs, and Susan was the only comment, she said that was necessary. One after that, for the training for the supervisor and program coordinator, Susan was the only comment, and she was, I think agnostic is what you were
Oh, yeah, I was getting to Oh, yeah, I was getting tired.
Is that this?
That's, I think that's what this is.
I think that's a this. Okay.
Sir, are
Just hang loose.
Do we want to just not include a comment on that one?
Yeah, you don't have to. Lucky I didn't put emojis in.
I would like emojis next year, actually. Okay, next one is implement a new initiative to secure additional funding for the center. I say yes, but I like supporting all fundraising. Susan again gave the hang loose. Are we okay with saying yes to that?
All right, did we skip stuff?
We're not to the pools yet.
Where are we at?
We are in R11.
We're just about to go to R12.
Okay, oh, got it.
Okay. All right, R12 Aquatics. First one is funds be approved to replaster the significantly worn lap pool at Welsh Pool. Sutan's comment was worn but necessary. I defer this expenditure unless it's vitally necessary. Mine was seek grant funding for this and any expense over $100,000.
And I provided you with Christie's response as well as several pictures
Yeah, I saw the picture.
from the pool. I actually visited the pool while it was drained this year to watch as Todd attempted to prepare it for the season. Because the, this is an annual task at this point, this this was supposed to have been resurfaced after 10 years. And we're at 16 now. So he has to, on an annual basis, grind out all of the rough sections that can cut people and then go through and hand patch all of those sections. The tile is also now cracking over there as well.
And I, and I believe we have postponed this on a number of occasions.
Yes.
Yeah, that's
I feel like, I believe it's six years in a row now that this has been
Yeah, I know this has come up in the past.
It's not cost-effective to have someone's time spent every year doing that.
Yeah.
Right.
We kicked it down the road. I, I would love to be able to push anything that's $110,000, you know, is that the number?
It's actually not that bad. I had a resurfaced one.
I would love to to push that up, but I, I think we have.
Well, first of all, these big old pictures starting to feel passive-aggressive, these responses to my questions. No, I'm just saying, that's a joke, that's a joke. Also, I mean, there's a lot of communities with dilapidated pools and they, they do, they do respond, not as well resource, but different perspectives. I, I support. I agree with this.
Okay.
I believe there were pictures in SIGZ as well.
Yeah. Okay, next one is
I didn't get to everything, okay? Kid was crying.
Please keep up. We encourage questions and comments. This is not to put anybody down. We please continue to ask and challenge.
And then Susan over here, yes, yes, yes.
It may not get it through.
I'm the bad guy over here.
All of this is not going through the budget process.
No.
Yeah, no.
No, it's not all going to be
All right, I'm gonna be coming to you with a huge tax increase.
Nope. I'll be like, we talked about it, we approved it, whatever. They didn't listen to me.
Okay, moving on. We're, we're in the home stretch, I feel like. Next one, the only comment was Susan supporting and that was the repair replace broken and crumbling tile at Welsh. Next one was replacing outdated inefficient splash features. Susan supported. Sutan questioned inefficient features or what that means. And he would defer replacement of interactive features until there are other more critical funding, since there are other more critical funding requests.
Nope, I, I hear Christie, makes sense.
So you're gonna say it makes sense?
Yep.
Okay, support. Uh, next one, this is funds to approve to purchase recycled plastic picnic table conversion kits to take care of deteriorating wood slats on existing, I guess, picnic tables at the pool. My comment was, could this be combined with a project to update the recycling at the pool and then rolled into a grant request to DEP? They have money through the Recycling Performance Fund that you can actually apply. And if we have a recycling component to it and you're using recycling plastic ta, recycled plastic tables, you probably could get funded. It'll be funded at 90%.
Yep. Let me know if I need to upright.
Are we considering a ban on single-use plastics?
This is different.
And I, I understand that. What I'm saying is, why don't we take all the plastic? And build them together for this.
Okay.
Cog, do y'all have a plan for this? I'm trying to be innovative here.
Literally in the home stretch.
Okay.
Okay, and last one from that side was funds to replace two domestic water heater units and we got again the hang loose from Susan. Please use emojis. Sure. Okay, R13, routine maintenance at Welsh and Park Forest. Susan said yes, no one else had comments. The active adult center apply for funding. Sutan says, yes, I would hope they're applying for grants routinely. I'm curious why we're being asked if they can apply for, I only bring that up because you had that question.
Yeah, and as Christie responded, yes, we return, retune, routinely apply for grants. And I'll just say, this goes across the agencies. It is still a cost proposal, which means we have to take it through this whole process, even if we are seeking grants. Because we are seeking to spend a significant amount of money, we have to bring it to you whether we're only going to do it with a grant fund or not. So we won't do it if there is no grant.
And then the next one is, agency implement a strategy that includes sponsorships and fundraising. And I said yes and Susan said hang loose. I'll interpret that as a yes. Okay, R15, this is Hess Field. I'll freely admit, I have too many feelings about Hess Field.
Yeah.
So, okay, Susan says, option one, absent external funding. Sutan says supports funding to replace some of the lighting, though the range is high. I would agree with tentative provision of some funding and that a more detailed request be made. And I said, seek funding grants or sponsorships for this project and I think the lights ought to be prioritized over at Hess. I would say that wherever you put the lights, Hess Oak Hall, you probably could find someone to sponsor. I'm just thinking, given that Hess Field's been around for so long and there are a lot of people that have played softball there, you might be able to tug on some hard strings to get someone to sponsor lights throughout there.
And make their light posts.
Exactly.
The, just to, yeah, Christie did respond to this and to kind of give the full picture of this. Our, the current issue with adding new lights at Hess is that Hess also has to go through a whole redesign once the master park plan is approved and then we proceed down that in however many years to reconfigure those fields, which means if we install permanent lighting, now we likely are going to have to pick those up and move those lights in the future and redo that system, which is why the staff is saying if you're going with a full lighting option, the recommendation would be to remove the Hess Field lights for now and put the lighting at Oak Hall where the fields are established. And then when we redo the Hess Field complex completely, we do the lighting project at that time there. Which, summing up Christie's comments, that's in your packet. It's a difficult scenario. This is, you know, egg or chicken, which one comes first?
So what do you guys want to say?
I guess yes, and then your comment. Additionally, seek, seek funding, grant our sponsorship for this project.
Okay. Okay. All right, next one. This is the trail surface conversion from stone to asphalt at either Oak Hall or Whitehall Road. My comment was, this seems like a long-term one because I know this was never really, I'm 99% certain this was never actually discussed back in the day when we discussed the plans for these parks. So I would think this should either go to a future year or get some grant funding. Pam had the exact same question because she called me and said, was this always in the plans? And I said, I don't think so. So that's her question. And then Susan said she supports the ADA access. Now, I will say, I'm pretty sure they're using trail surface aggregate out there, which is what other parks are using as well, and that is ADA accessible.
So it is, okay.
Yeah.
And Christie's response in short was, you're right, this is a long-term improvement. Not an immediate priority when compared to other critical capital, capital needs. We're open to deferring this request to future years, especially if there's agreement across all municipalities. The paved or concrete trails was in the original plans for Whitehall, but I don't believe any of the other parks were designed that way.
No, it wasn't. Yeah, for Oak Hall. So what do you guys want to say? Defer?
Defer, yeah. I know there's a push for, there might be some grants on doing things that are making something more accessible, but it's already accessible. I don't know if you made the case.
So how about defer and seek grant funding for the project? Okay.
The, the real push on this as far as CRPR goes is that this reduces maintenance costs and it also reduces the use of chemicals in the parks. We have to treat weeds and everything else and every time there's a large storm, the staff has to go back out and replace the aggregate that has been lost in numerous areas throughout. So by paving it, staff no longer has to go out for any of those, those items to take care of those.
Okay, Larry, you are now up. The next one is about funding for the concession kitchen equipment. I said no, not until there's a plan to staff the concession stand. Pam said, in the concession kitchen plans, wasn't kitchen equipment discussed in the cost of having a concession kitchen? I can't see having any kitchen without kitchen equipment, especially when it's to support food operations for the parks. And Susan said yes. And Larry had a question, comment.
And my question is, I, I just can't believe that $10,000 is just gonna cover this, this equipment, though I don't, I, I certainly don't know what equipment you're putting in there, but I'm, I'm
Don't think of a restaurant. We, we are
I'm digging back to my Wendy's of Greater Pittsburgh days.
We are limited to the kinds of food preparation that we can do without installing a full-vent system.
Okay.
So less of the kind of food prep equipment than you're thinking of. Yeah, so there will be a grill on the outside because we do most of the hot dogs and those kinds of things outside on a grill.
Outside on a grill, okay.
Yep. And in fact, one of the design changes we asked for, for the pavilion construction was for them to include, I believe it was a four-foot wall to go around where the grill will sit because where we currently have these operations, kids are constantly running around and coming very close to the grills. And so we would like some kind of firmer protection around those. So instead you're looking at, you know, the
You can get that grill at Lowe's on, you know, the
Yes, so
At the end of the season.
This is refrigerators, freezers, prep tables and small appliances are what we are looking for.
Okay, that, that makes more sense.
The kitchen structure is included in the construction contract. Most interior equipment was not.
So what do we say on this one?
I say knock off $100 and I'll donate my toaster.
Okay, beyond that comment, what do we say on this one?
I support it.
Supported? Okay.
I guess so. I support it so long as I keep making money at the concession stands.
Yes.
They got, I only supported the gluten-free options.
I believe, I have seen the draft concessions operations plan and I believe that our other concession stands are currently operating, I believe it was a 15.4% margin
Yeah.
on those, which is within the expected 10 to 20% from the national organization. So yes, we, we expect to see sa, similar revenues.
Right, we don't expect the concession stands to be, to cost us money.
No, they, we, we are expecting to earn approximately 15% on concessions operations. But as you've seen through here, you know, while we are building the concession, building itself, there is still equipment, staffing and tables for people to sit at, which
Right, exactly.
I think is the next thing.
Which is the next one.
Tables is the next thing and it makes my comment look stupid to say is this really necessary for 2026? Because you have really people that need a place to sit. But Susan had a good comment about could people sponsor the picnic tables?
For municipalities?
You're gonna buy a picnic table at Whitehall Road?
How much is it? Yeah, why not?
Who knows how much?
Pay for a patent.
Okay.
Thirty-two elected officials, just build one table out to each
Yeah, everybody can see them.
Oh, no, we get our own, we get our own table.
I like it.
Question, is there gonna be like a ribbon-cutting ceremony once this is all done?
There was one in the snow.
Are you talking about the Whitehall Park or the concession stand?
Concession stand.
Um, I'm sure we can cut a ribbon for the concession stand. If that is desired, we can
Very contentious project. I think that'd be dope and I want Larry behind the thing with a grill.
Very familiar with fries cooking.
That's the greatest moment of the night. I'm very familiar with fries. Okay, and then the very last thing was the roof at the library and Susan and I both supported it.
It's been leaking.
Yeah, it's leaking and they got money for it. That's awesome.
At least, at least we did our homework.
I
Yes.
To say, we absolutely appreciate getting comments and questions. It gives us a chance to talk about what we do and what we hope to do and how we are doing our best to not waste your money.
And I will tell you that you are, I think, the first ones in the region to get through this in one night. State colleges to talk about it again. Harris is talking about two days to talk about it. So you guys, best, I tell them all the time, Patton's the best of the region. They yell at me, but
Any other questions for me or the staff?
And thank you, Kim. Walt, continue. Thank you.
I remember next year too, Walt, about the vehicles. It'll stick at some point.
We will get you a tour and make sure that you get to see the whole operation.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Be an Alpha firefighter.
I mean, I don't need the whole suit, I don't need the whole suit, but
Parks. Who's here from Parks?
That's Clara is on the authority, our rep to the authority.
Claire, thank you also. You're, you're sitting in the back quiet, but we see you and we thank you for taking the time.
And Clara is our new rep to the Recreation Authority, so this is, she's just stepped in all this. This is her first year with this.
She's wondering what, what she got in.
The one she signed up for.
And, and again, just to clarify, it's, you're bringing in the whole smoke machine and all that stuff. I'm serious, it's gonna be fun.
Okay.
I think that's a great
It's the whole smoke machine.
Let's do a, we can do it at Halloween.
Walt, as long as it's not in the lobby.
No, this is a serious endeavor. We're not dressing up.
We're not doing it down here. We'll do, we're gonna do it at Halloween.
What if you, oh, fill this whole room. Do not do it at Halloween, this is serious.
Don't you remember stop, stop, drop and roll? Might have learned that when I was a child.
And then, and then when we did that, we used to all do the worm after. And the teachers used to be like, this is serious.
Okay, all right, now. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
You're not, not stand to the end of the meeting? Got it. Yeah, please watch, get CNET them clicks on YouTube.
CNET needs those clicks.
They're gonna come back next year. We had a 200% increase in YouTube clicks. We need more funding.
It's gonna move us from two to eight.
Stop, there's more than that.
Two to 12.
Cover your ears, CNET. We love you. All right, whoa, we got through that. All right, public safety monthly report. Come on, chief.
All righty, while Larry is bringing up the June report from the police, you'll know once it's up here, we have 200, we had 209 traffic stops, we did 24 citations, 27 parking tickets, handled 19 criminal arrests. Bike patrol did a fantastic job even with the heat we had in June, rode 224 miles, did 223 business checks, wrote four parking tickets, handled 14 incidents and did four vacation home checks. The department notes, there's a 50-year-old male who we arrested for stalking, loitering and prowling. He was caught on camera looking into the windows of a residence on multiple occasions. On the night of the male's arrest, the victim called police stating that there was a male outside of his residence who was looking inside his window. An officer quickly responded and apprehended the male who admitted to looking into the residence several times. Twenty-nine-year-old female was arrested and charged with arrest prior requisition. An officer stopped the female for speeding and then learned that the female had a felony warrant from another county for criminal mischief. Two 19-year-old males and a juvenile male were trust, were charged with trespassing. An officer checked on one of our township parks after dark when the park was closed and encountered the three individuals and smelled burnt marijuana. The three males were cited for trespassing. The three males were cited for trespassing. The officer destroyed the small amount of marijuana paraphernalia that was confiscated from one of the males. There were seven arrests made for retail theft and three for driving under the influence. Batten a thousand on warrants, we served 10 of the 10 we attempted, and we conducted 16 vacation home checks. We did use force during one incident in the month of June. Our officers were dispatched to Penn Highlands for a report of a disorderly female in the ED. On scene, our officers learned that the female was in crisis and the hospital staff was trying to work with a delegate to secure a mental health warrant. Once the warrant was secured by the hospital staff, they asked for our officers to assist with getting the female into one of the exam rooms. Multiple verbal attempts, our officers tried to deescalate and tried to just verbally talk her into going into the room without using any force. However, she did not cooperate. Eventually, our officers did have to escort her into the room and onto the exam bed. The female began physically resisting. She kicked one of our officers in the chest, actually broke his body worn camera that he had on his chest. The female eventually was restrained, restrained to the, the bed by staff. As she struggled, she was able to free a hand and she punched one of the staff members in the face. So again, she was restrained by staff in the hospital and on a second time was able to free her hand, so our officers actually had to handcuff her to the bed. And she eventually was sedated by hospital staff. Female was charged with aggravated assault, two counts, one for our officer, one for the, the nurse, counted disorderly conduct and counted criminal mischief. There was no injuries reported by the officer who was kicked or by the female. However, the staff member did suffer a minor injury from being punched. Under Community Relations, Officer Tuskovich, Officer Snyder, and Graff attended a Bark in the Park event at the State College Spike Scheme. Officer Finocchio spoke with employees at a township business about recognizing scams, fraud, and criminal activity as part of their employment duties. And then Officer Kaufman, Officer Brahowski, and Officer Brooks all assisted at the Vellfont Cruz in the Vellfont Borough. Uh, let's see here, under Training and Department Activities, our officers attended Tactical Response Team Training. We're beginning the season now where we do our updates on emergency vehicle operation. Every two years, we get re-updated. Sergeant Schaefer attended Defensive Tactics Instructor Training. As I'd mentioned earlier with Terry here, we administered our written exam for the position of Police Officer, the testing to 42 individuals. And oral interviews were given to the top 20 candidates with the assistance of Amy, myself, and Sergeant Shapenko and Detective Solay. So we are still navigating that process. Probably next month, we'll have a list here to certify of everybody who has passed every, those exams. Officer Snyder and Graff completed their required two days of training. They also received their yearly recertification from Keystone Canine, which is required by MOPAC. They did a demonstration at the Nittany Mall. Talked about getting some items for the, the Activity Center there, I think that's where they were at. And then they, again, did the Bark in the Park night at State College Spikes. Graff was also deployed to do a person trap and a vehicle sniff, issue, during a vehicle and foot pursuit in Ferguson Township and then conducted a sniff for PSP. I met with State College School District and their architects as they're talking about the construction for the new middle school. I attended a Domestic Violence Sexual Assault Task Force meeting and Center County Chiefs meeting. Few notes of appreciation we received, one, the first one's from Chief Whitmer at Vellfont Borough. Again, thanking our assistants, thanking our officers for their assistance for the Vellfont Cruz. Next, we had one from a resident who was bitten by a dog and just wanted to commend the professionalism of Officer Justin Sunderland. She was just very, very pleased with the services she received and the compassion she received from Officer Sunderland. So it was nice for her to take time to, to reach out. And then we also received a note from a family who was away, just showing their appreciation for our officers doing vacation home checks and just saying she was grateful to have such a helpful and caring police force in this area. Had to include a photo of Graff. What's a police report without a photo of Graff? So with Officer Snyder, Ike the Spike, and I really don't know if the Line Country Kia guy has a name, but he's in there too. So I'm not sure, yeah, I'm sure he does, but I don't know what it is, so. That's them at the Bark, the Bark at the Park event. And lastly, my record list for calls for service, we had 430 calls. That's down from the 531 we handled in May. Most of that can be attributed to school being out and our officers not doing the school checks, which account for about 100 more calls in May. Seventy of our calls for service were traffic-related and 49 were health and safety EMS assists. And that completes my report.
Snappy turtle, man. Saw a call about a snapping turtle.
I didn't see that without him.
Yeah, it was pretty funny.
You should've put his picture.
A call about what?
A snapping turtle.
Oh, the snapping turtle.
Anyway, no, it shouldn't have.
We actually have received multiple calls about snapping turtles, so-
So I heard.
So, just for awareness, yes, feel free to call us if you have any issues with snapping turtles in your neighborhoods, we'll come take care of it for you.
Protect your kids, protect your animals, there are snapping turtles lurking all around.
I don't know about all around.
That are dangerous. Don't talk about me. Also, we're pulling over kids now in the park.
We've always done that. After, we, our officers patrol the park after dark when they close, almost nightly, probably nightly, so.
All right, that's just, you know, back in the day, people used to do that.
Back in the day, oh my lord.
But you need to follow the law. Don't do drugs, illegal drugs.
Pam has something she wants to say.
Chief, I have a question. For the Fourth of July, what are the procedures for fireworks? Are residents allowed to use fireworks in a residential area?
So there are some, the new, the new law, they have to be with the, outside of 150 feet from an occupied structure. They have to be commercial grade, they can't be, you know, the things that you see like at Beaver Stadium for Fourth Best. They cannot be under the influence of alcohol. They have to be, they have to have permission. If they, it's not their property from the homeowner or the property owner to, to set them off. But the biggest thing is the 150 feet from an occupied structure to make sure that we don't have any issues with any buildings catching fire.
Now, why I'm asking, we know about the sparklers, they're, they're okay, but when you start shooting up in the air and it bursts and, and the remnants fall down, that's where my concern is.
Then, yeah, then you're getting outside of the commercial grade fireworks. So it has to be, I believe it's under 50 milligrams of explosive material is the, the threshold before it becomes more of a show firework or something that, like you said, would shoot up in an aerial, yeah.
Can we put something on our website on updating?
Yep, Sophie did, did a push on social media before the Fourth of July.
As we did that before the Fourth of July. Yep, I provided her with information to put out, so.
Okay.
Yeah, and we'll just remind folks, as we did get a comment from a resident on the Fourth of July about fireworks thrown off at 1:00 in the morning, to just always call the police. You know, we don't see the comment on social media till the next day, but if that's happening at 1:00 in the morning and it's keeping you up, call the police so the police can come out and deal with it.
And it's the non-emergency number, right? Okay.
Yeah, and so I think, obviously, it's not in this report, it'll be next month, but I believe on the actual day, on the Fourth of July, we only received one noise complaint about fireworks. So it was kind of minimum compared to what we, we normally, you only get a handful, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief. I guess one, keep it on top of that.
I definitely saw some non-commercial fireworks.
It's not unusual, there's a-
Always is.
I'm not trying to get you in trouble out there, I'm just saying, be careful. Uh, all right, thanks, Chief. Public Works, should we close your requests?
So we have a request to close Highland Drive between North Oak Lane and Briarwood Lane for a block party on July 27th from 1:00 to 8:00. This is an annual block party that these folks do every year.
Was this Supervisor Whitman's friends doing all this?
I don't know.
We had an argument here two years ago, I think, about this.
Yeah, and I don't remember if this is that one or not.
Okay, uh-
Mr. Chair, can I ask Amy a question?
Yeah, can we, do we have to make a motion?
Yes, we need to approve it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion before we start discussion. That's okay?
So moved.
Uh, second? So the motion is what is written in the agenda?
To, yeah, approve the closure.
Supervisor, Rob?
Amy, can we, on the street closing request form, can we just make an addition to revise it just a little bit so where there are, we can put boxes to check that say block party or special events? Because just looking at that, wasn't sure if it wasn't for your agenda telling us it's a block party.
Yeah, actually, one of the things you're gonna see at your meeting next month is we're gonna revise our regulations to add in special event regulations because right now we have sort of this cumbersome process and try to make it a little bit more streamlined for folks that wanna have a block party.
Okay.
And so, yes, you'll see that, but yes, we revamped that ahead of that.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving on, Resolution 2025-10 authorizing the submission of a multimodal grant for stormwater rehabilitation on Douglas Drive.
So we're seeking some grant funding from DCED to do a complete stormwater rehabilitation project on Douglas Drive. This project includes the replacement of the culvert. We were hoping to do that this summer, but the costs were a little too high to include it with North Oak. Total project cost is $193,500. We'll seek $174,150 in grant funding with the township providing a match of $19,350.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Do I have to go through all that if it's unanimous?
What? Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right, just making sure. All right, moving on, Planning and Zoning, Planning Commission Report.
You've made it all this time, Jim.
Wasn't I at the Planning Commission meeting?
You were at the Planning Commission, yes.
All right. Nice to see you.
Hi, I'm Jim Proin, reporting on the July 7th meeting of the Patton Township Planning Commission. So Pamela Adams, the new director of the Center Region Planning Agency, provided an update on the progress of the Center Region Comprehensive Plan. She noted they finalized communities' values, vision, and big ideas for the future and also presented how the community can utilize a future land use map to provide input to the comprehensive plan and that we understand will be available to the public in a July to September timeframe. Then Jenna Wargo, our principal land use planner, reviewed a proposal that was submitted by a community member, Elliot Killian, focusing on attainable housing. Jenna noted that Mr. Killian's proposal aligns with many of the principles of a framework that the Planning Commission or the planning staff have developed, which is a three-step process of property maintenance code amendments, which we've seen some of those with our short-term rental activity, and attainable housing ordinance to be developed, and a zoning ordinance review. The perspective of the staff is that advancing any zoning amendments before completing the attainable housing ordinance just undermines that structured approach that they have in mind. And then she further reviewed a project outline for the attainable housing ordinance and that project initiation and planning is July, August of '25 and a target for the ordinance adoption of July, August of '26. And then September, October, a post-adoption follow-up. The Planning Commission expressed our appreciation to Mr. Killian for his work and we also gave our appreciation for the efforts of staff and support for the ordinance project and the timeline as proposed. And there being no further business, we adjourned. Anything else? Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, Administration, Resolution 2025-11 adopting a 2025 update to the Center County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
So state and local governments are required by the federal government to develop and maintain a hazard mitigation plan. The plan is actually updated every 10 years by the county. The 2025 plan update was developed by the county and Jonathan worked closely with them and also worked with the Center Region municipalities to review it, and they also talked with local stakeholders. So we're just being asked to approve this plan update. Every municipality in the county has to approve it.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
There's been a motion seconded, uh, is listed in the agenda. Any discussion? See none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Appointment of Legislative Liaison for the Pennsylvania Municipal League.
So the league is looking to try to get a legislative liaison from each of their members. Basically, this is to help their lobbying efforts. Right now, there's a bill to try to streamline local government advertising regulations, which are pretty cumbersome because they require advertisements in newspapers, this is an example. So having someone who, when they find out a bill might come before the House or the Senate, having someone who's able to pick up the phone and say, hey, I'm from Patton Township and we spend X amount of dollars and it's very cumbersome process. So that's what they're looking for out of this person. I will tell you, they do a good job of providing updates on what's going on. Their Legislative Director, Amy Sturgis, is excellent at what she does. So it wouldn't be a super heavy list, lift, but it would be someone who has the time to move on if there's legislative, we need legislative issues we need to be aware of.
So that's gonna be you?
I, I mean-
Has to be elected, doesn't it?
It doesn't have to be elected, it probably should be elected, though. I'm on the Legislative Committee and I'm on the Finance and Budgeting Subcommittee, I think, for that, which I'm happy to do. This would be somebody that can reach out to elected officials and typically that conversation goes better if it comes from an elected official.
Supervisor Hiacheski wants to be the Advocate Liaison.
Perfect.
Do we agree with that?
If you wanna make a motion, maybe that would be good.
Can I make a motion to appoint Supervisor Hiacheski as the member to serve as the Legislative Liaison for Patton Township?
So moved.
Second. Can I second?
You can second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any ayes? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Speaking of, I did see something about the, um, the newspaper advertising and how we need to advocate because what they're trying to do is limit-
There's two versions of the bill, is my understanding. The first version that was put out. So I had a very interesting conversation with a state senator after PSATs last year when they spoke about this at PSATs. And she said, "We've been trying for years because newspapers," and I have a journalism degree, I'm sorry to say this, "but newspapers are going away, right?" And so she said, "We've been trying to move this so that you can put them on your own websites or you can do other avenues." The newspapers have a pretty decent lobby in Harrisburg, and so they push back all the time. So the one version of the bill says you can only advertise on a website of a paper that used to be physically printed, which takes out statecollege.com, which doesn't really help, right? Because we still would then fall into, we pay a lot of money for legal ads through the CDT. Right now, we can only publish a legal ad on a Sunday or a Wednesday, so it's very cumbersome. It's better now because we have a month between our meetings in the summer, but during the year, it's difficult because I'm constantly, you have to advertise no more than 30, no less than 7s. You're counting all the days to make sure you can get it in. And the CDT doesn't really handle it locally anymore, it all goes to Texas because we get back all the notifications that we need for the state, from the state of Texas. So one of the other bills, and I know Centrice, when she becomes the president of PML, she's talked about trying to advance this as well. One of the other bills would allow it to be on your own website or on a website like statecollege.com, which they update every day. They have news stories every day and they're a news source, just like the CDT is a news source. So the more flexibility would be the better for local governments. I certainly understand the concern that there are some municipalities that do not have websites or, you know, places that are just very small, but there has to be a way that helps the rest of us that have websites and other ways to do things. I mean, we can actually put on our website a legal ad section and we try to let people know when we're doing things, but I don't think many people are reading the legal ads in the newspaper anymore, anyway. So something has to happen because it is not modernized at all.
So now you got your marching orders.
I'll make it happen. I just wrote a grant for journalism.
All right.
Great.
Couldn't send my people out.
Is this a conflict of interest? No.
All right, I'm moving- All right, uh, moving on, consent agenda, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. How's Sean on the agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Uh, managers' report.
Um, just two things. Number one, the Pennsylvania Municipal League will hold its annual summit in the wonderful city of Erie, October first through the fourth. So if you're interested in going, let myself or Lawana know, because we can get you, um, it's actually a nice hotel, it's right on the lake, and Erie's actually a very nice city, but we can get you registered and get hotel rooms secured for everybody. And then the other thing is, myself, Centrice, Adam, and Ben Estelle will be presenting at our International Managers Conference in Tampa, Florida in October on the Regional Parks Program. It's kind of a big deal that we got asked to, we filled out a form and have been selected to speak. Uh, we're pretty excited, and we're gonna have a practice dress rehearsal before we go to Florida to make sure our show is ready for the road.
Congratulations.
Yeah, we're excited. Ben, it was Ben, it was all Ben. Ben's presented at ICMA before, and like, you have to, you have to play well with the room, or they don't want you to come back, and he's been a great moderator, and he's moderated a bunch of sessions. So he's hurting the rest of us, which is good, because we need to be heard of like cats.
Amy, what's the date?
Uh, for that, it's October twenty-sixth, it's the Saturday, we're, yeah, I think it's the twenty-sixth.
Sweet. The second thing was what?
The Municipal League Summit.
Uh, that was the second thing?
That was the first thing, this was the second thing.
Oh.
ICMA, yep. It's all good.
All right.
And I'll answer any questions that you have. I will also say that the road crew, I need to give them a shout-out, they did the curbing on Christopher Lane, we're paving Christopher Lane, hasn't been touched since nineteen eighty-seven. It, the asphalt's in really bad shape, we had it milled up, we had a curbing machine come in, and the entire crew laid curb in, and they did a fantastic job. Um, they, they're very proud of their work, they did a great job, and now we'll be overlaying the rest of that road then, and we had some stormwater concerns out there that we worked on addressing as well.
Nice. All right, well, moving on, committee reports, any, um, thing that members would want to report from their committees?
No, as it stated, public safety was canceled until next month.
Public safety canceled till next month. All right, uh, any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.